All this meeting in order, will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the law. We please start with a roll call.
Council President Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Member O'Halloran.
Here.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. We're gonna start it off tonight with a proclamation. Disability Pride Month, and start with that.
Right proclamation, whereas people with disabilities have a proud history of fighting for inclusion and justice, whereas people with disabilities have experienced generations of marginalization and deserve equitable treatment in the workplace, education system, and every other part of our community. Whereas every July is Disability Pride Month, dedicated to honoring the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of the diverse disability community. And whereas Disability Pride Month marks the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act landmark legislation signed July 26, 1990, prohibiting discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life. Whereas this month is a reminder to uplift the voices of people with disabilities, challenges outdated perceptions, and advocate for continued access to essential services and support. And whereas we also recognize the various organizations and caretakers that serve children and adults with disabilities through education, therapies, day programs, and providing these individuals and their families with the skills to support to succeed. And whereas the City of Renton supports and respects people with disabilities and aims to be an inclusive place where people of all abilities can thrive. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavone, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim July 2025 to be Disability Pride Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in the special observance. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 21st day of July 2025. Signed, Armando Pavone, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
Okay, then move by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council adopt the proclamation as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. And tonight, accepting the proclamation is Kindering Director of Public Affairs Christina Mendetta. Christina.
Good evening, Mayor Pavone, members of the council. Thank you so much. Yep, my name is Christina Mendetta. I'm the Director of Public Affairs at Kindering, and I am thrilled tonight to be joined by both Kindering staff and Kindering families who are from Renton, to just quickly say thank you for recognizing disability pride. As you may know, Kindering is a local nonprofit organization that serves little kids, primarily little kids with developmental delays and disabilities. And last year, we served over 300 kids in Renton, from Renton, with pediatric therapies, early supports, and other services. I just checked. So why is disability pride so important to Kindering? It's important because we work with lots of wonderful little kids with disabilities, many of whom will grow up into wonderful adults with disabilities. And we want the community around them to be inclusive, celebratory, understanding, and respectful of who they are. And so that's exactly the message that you are sending to our families by doing this proclamation. So it may seem like a small symbolic thing in some ways, but actually, it's a really important message. And so I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Before you take off, we're gonna have some pictures. We're gonna take some pictures, but I want to thank you for the work you do, so. You're building a house? All right. Next up, we have some work to do. It's a public hearing. Acquisition of King County Parcel 1723059026. And Amanda Free will be presenting. And Jen Asta.
Good evening. We are here this evening for a public hearing on a property acquisition. It's King County Parcel 1723059026. This parcel was first identified in the Tri-Park Master Plan in 2006, and then was again included in 2011 and 2020 in our Parks, Recreation, and Natural Areas Plan. The vision is to expand the park property with the adjacent city-owned parks. This opportunity would realize the park expansion, maximize the riverfront public access, and provide future environmental efforts along the Cedar River. Whoop, wrong one. The existing conditions is a currently is a vacant 12 and 1/2 acre site. And historically, this was a stone way, sand, and gravel property. The current use, there is some storage equipment on it, but that is all. And then in 2019, we have an approved, the city approved a land use application for a large apartment building and commercial building on that site. As the market conditions shifted, the development ceased in around 2022, which gave way for this opportunity for the city to purchase. Staff recommends to adopt the ordinance authorizing acquisition of King County Parcel 1723059026 through the city's powers of eminent domain. After authorization, we will work to reach a final agreement with the property owner and any, the property sale and conditions. The property purchase price will be at fair market value. The city's use of eminent domain was requested by the property owner. And then after agreement, we will enter into a purchase and sale agreement, which we will come back at that time for council approval. And we are happy to address any questions on the acquisition request.
All right, any questions by council this time? All right, we do have one person signed up to speak. Yes, okay. First person is Paul Dutton.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, staff. Um, I guess I'm the only one here, and I'd just like to say as a resident, I think it's been a big week for the Cedar River. And I wanted to say thank you to all of you up there who have helped shut down the asphalt plan on SR 169. And I think this would just kind of cap it off to move forward with this. I'm wholly in favor of this, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Councilmember.
We can have a question.
Um, no, you have a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a question regarding the acquisition request, even though it's initiated by the property owners. I wanted to know, in terms of not, the owner and the city is not able to come with agreement in the end, what happens to the, the partial, is it, how does it play out? Could you kindly help us understand the process?
Um, we are expecting to be able to come to an agreement with them. But if in the end, there is some disagreement, we would have to come back and discuss what that looks like and why. And then as a, as a group, decide which way to move forward. So it's hard to answer that because we don't have those details in front of us at this moment.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a question?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation. This is very good, and I'm very happy to see the Tri-Park Master Plan again. It's a while since I have not seen this wonderful document. When I see right now the, the, um, the areas that we designated, I guess, more than 15 years ago for the plan of the Tri-Parks, Master Plan, are there gonna be any changes on this proposed? Or we are gonna stay with what's, what's called the Tri-Park Master Plan? Meaning, if we have a dog park of leash, or we have ballparks, is this still the current plan? Or eventually will change?
I know that they're looking at what the, by buying this property, it opens up opportunities for that site. And I know they are looking at what that is, and they are looking for public outreach eventually to find out what to add into this area. I know that's part of the updated Parks and Recreation Natural Plan as well.
I, I see that MJ is here.
Yeah, I was just gonna tell.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm just gonna speak.
I was just gonna recommend MJ.
Good evening, council. Mary Jane Van Clave, Parks and Recreation Administrator. We are revisiting this, ooh, so sorry, Jenna, we're too close. Uh, we are opening up public feedback and comment that we would encourage the public to give us notice on what you would like to see from the Tri-Park Master Plan, since the original is dated. A lot has changed, and also there's opportunities to move the dog park. We have some requests to look in other places where that might be more viable. We'll be at River Days this weekend, where we would love people to come by and give us feedback. Uh, we have information on what is currently offered, but we would love to get feedback on what is of interest. We are updating our entire park rake and park wreck and open space plan right now. And this is one of the plans that we're pulling out specifically to get updated information. We'd be happy to come back to council, probably at the end of the summer, early fall, with an update on the whole park wreck and open space plan. We've worked really hard on getting a lot of community engagement, but specifically to update on what we've heard the community would like for this particular plan, sorry.
Thank you, MJ.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I hear somebody?
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes. Um, I just want to say that I believe that this is an extraordinary opportunity for our city to have better access to the river that runs through us. And as I mentioned very early in this process, there's salmon habitat restoration opportunities that we could take advantage of. There's river access. There's just, there's, this is a legacy, this is a legacy purchase for the City of Renton. And I just am so excited to see this happening. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sir, we need a motion to close this.
Yeah, I know, I was just, I was waiting for the, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Uh, let's see, move to, oh, move to close the public hearing.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, seconded by Councilmember Prince and Perez, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you. We're on to administrative report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Renton River Days is finally here and promises an action-packed weekend. Join us at Coulon Park Friday, July 25th at 7:30 PM with music from the Kennydales before the evening's drone show grand finale at 9:30 PM. Saturday's events include the parade, plus an afternoon of live music, crafts, and activities at Liberty Park. Festivities continue Sunday afternoon with more fun, including the annual Rubber Ducky Derby, before closing the event with live music from the Hipsters at 4:30 PM. For a full schedule and festival hours, please visit rentonwa.gov/riverdays. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/trafic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is it, sir.
All right, thank you. We're on to audience comment. We do have a couple of people signed up. I want to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. You'll have three minutes. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, give us your name and city of residence. And first up is Paul Dutton.
Evening again. It's like deja vu. I, first, I wanted to thank the city, late May. Um, there were finally a couple radar, radar boards put on Northeast Fourth Street that say slowdown. That's all they say, unless somebody's immediately pulling off of Rosario, heading towards the city, where they haven't quite hit up the speed yet. But overall, the, the speeding on that section of road between Nile Avenue and 156th Avenue of Southeast, like, if you've never looked at it on a map, it's the largest stretch of road within the city limits without any kind of traffic light or, you know, something else. Like, there's a, you go further down by RTC, there's a, you know, protected crosswalk. There's nothing like that there. It's a long stretch. And the speeding has not stopped. There are still people cruising through there at 70 miles an hour late at night. There were somebody whipping donuts in the, you know, just doing burnout donuts in the street, middle of the street at 2 AM two weeks ago. You know, some of those little raised concrete barriers that we've got all over the city would really go a long way in that area, and it's a cheap, quick fix. It would, you know, it's not gonna stop the speeding, but it could definitely stop people from doing donuts in the, in the road. You know? A protected crosswalk at Rosario would be a godsend for anybody trying to cross that street. There, I know there was a traffic study done during COVID. I mean, nobody goes across, tries to walk across that street because they're not gonna take their lives in their hand. It would just, it would be really nice, without having to go through a big formal engineering study that costs a ton of money, to just do something, if we have the ability, and at least get it on the plans, if not, because it's not there right now. I'm running on time here. Yeah, that's, that's really it. I mean, I did invite all of you to come up and just walk the street. Especially in the morning or in the evenings, like, you know, rush hour, early morning, five, starting at 5 AM right now. I mean, there's people flying through there, coming up, turning off 156, coming from Maple Valley, and they just peel through there. The King County trucks, road construction trucks, they come barreling through there. You know, and they're loud, and they're bouncing around. Same thing with the Republic Service trucks when they're operating. Yeah, I just, I'd invite you to come up and, you know, just walk it. Don't drive it, walk it. Understand what it's like. See how noisy it is. See how unsafe it feels. So, time's up, so, good evening.
All right, thank you. Next up is Alice Lockridge.
Hi, I'm Alice Lockridge. I'm a resident of Renton. I'm here today to make sure that everybody, including the online audience and those here today, and the council, and the mayor, know that we made the news today. Renton made the national news again. We're on front page, above the fold of USA Today. Not only are we 2/3 of the front page, we're also the entire sixth page. The stories about the Houston family being frightened off their land, threatened with house fires, and imminent domain takeover of their 10-acre farm. When George and Rachel finally decided to sell, the family began to collapse. The kids living at home were collateral damage in the 1970s, and their lives suddenly changed so much, they were traumatized. This news story has no mention of the city that soon annexed that very land, making even a tiny effort to support the displaced families or the African-American community known as Hilltop that also collapsed once their biggest landowner family was broken. This USA Today article is another missed opportunity for an investigative reporter to tell anything about the hometown of this family and their neighbors being helped as they resettled. And since history repeats itself, the city has many other opportunities to do the right thing. Right now, there are 32 more families and eight small business entities that are being forced out of their homes due to a proposed expansion of Renton High School. The prediction is that more children of this district moving out of their homes will also be harmed by this sudden forced move. There aren't any stories of the city government helping these children or their families. Not a word in this long article. There are so many missed opportunities for our city's governmental leaders to do something newsworthy that to help the folks in the imminent domain situation. But there's nothing to report. Our city government is allowing the changes in roads and land use that will harm our neighbors. And when reporters ask, there's nothing good to tell. What a shame.
All right, thank you. Next up is Tristan Cochran.
This microphone sounds all right. I was getting a bit of feedback earlier. Um, I'm making a recommendation, and in addition, for adjustments to traffic signals in our downtown. And it's about right on red. I've talked about this before, but I have some more input, and I definitely want to keep this conversation going as well. A major critique of right on red bans, I've noticed, has been over confusion. In downtown Seattle, you'll have intersections where one, one part of the intersection has right on red, but the other part of it doesn't. Then you go up to the next intersection, and there's nothing. But a good idea for solving that confusion would be to have zones in our city where it's just not allowed completely to ban right on, or just have a zone where right on red isn't allowed. So yeah, my additional suggestion would be have a zone in downtown with a right on red ban. This way, people won't have any confusion over it. You'll have signage at every single signalized intersection as well. Big signs to not tiny little ones like I see downtown Seattle have. Also as well, there's a concern that traffic can be impacted from this, but my main question for that is, should we be prioritizing through traffic in our downtown and the convenience of driving over the safety of those walking in downtown and downtown residents like myself walking to places? The vast majority of people driving in downtown Renton are not stopping in downtown Renton. They're going through, they're going to other parts of the city. They're treating my neighborhood like a highway, and my neighborhood basically is a highway, South Third and South Second Street being part of a state route. There are serious safety issues walking in downtown, and I experience it all the time. I'm constantly having to be on the lookout for people not yielding when making left turns, people creeping forward into the crosswalk while doing right on red. In a situation like that, you have to step out into the intersection, or you have to try and walk around them and hope they're not still going forward. It's just, people are not yielding anymore. It feels like it's gotten worse. This is something I pay attention to, and it definitely feels like it's gotten worse. And I hear it from people I know in downtown that work in downtown as well. My friend Elena was up here a few weeks ago, not even a Renton resident, but it's enough for her to comment on this, and she's never commented a public comment for anything like this before. And lastly, this is something that can be done pretty quickly, pretty cheaply. It's mainly just signage and public education. The biggest challenge getting this done is from support from downtown residents, downtown businesses, and especially, but mainly, people in the city, council, and the mayor as well. So yeah, I just want to say, I hope this is something that can be looked into, taken seriously, and really considered. It's something to be done very fast. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and we have somebody signed up virtually. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, worry about that. Yes, we do have one person signed up to speak, and that, Dr. Linda Smith. Dr. Smith, go ahead.
Good evening, Linda Smith. Um, sorry, I'm just getting around to doing this because it's been a little bit late. But I really wanted to come back and thank, um, Jennifer Spencer for her support during her Juneteenth event. It was hung around the whole day, but not only her, there was others. And it was really a delight to, you know, see our police department was there, and they kept just walking through, engaging the crowd throughout the day. Juneteenth in the City of Renton is really important to me. I'm very passionate about it because we started it in 2018 with the Renton Police Department. And that relationship to me is so important, and so I just wanted to come back and say how grateful and appreciative. Also, I'd like to just thank Jessie and Mary Jane, who also provided support. But especially Jennifer was amazing, and, um, was there at, at the call. We had a couple aggressive people that tried to take over the event, and, and she was right there to help us get through it. So I just wanted to come back publicly to say thank you for her work and support in Juneteenth, but not just that, but for all those names that are called, Jessie, Mary Jane, and Renton Police Department. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, appreciate everybody that comes to the council meetings and speaks. We do listen to you. Tonight, we heard, um, talk about checking into speeding on Northeast Fourth and looking into crosswalk on Rosario. Thanking the Parks Department Jennifer Smith for, or Jennifer Spencer for the work they did around Juneteenth. And then a ban on right turn zones. So I know that's something that Public Works has, has taken a look at. We have not had a report back from them, but once again, thank you all for coming and speaking during public comment. Um, all right, we're on to the consent agenda. There are five items for council consideration. Are there any, like, pull for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
None move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. We're on, on to unfinished business. Council President Albertson.
No unfinished business.
Councilmember Van.
Uh, no unfinished business.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has one report to present.
All right, Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report regarding the 120-day closure of Hauser Way North between Lake Washington Boulevard North and Lowe's Business Delivery Access. The Transportation Aviation Committee requires concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the 120-day closure of Hauser Way North between Lake Washington Boulevard North and Lowe's Business Delivery Access. This is to occur between September 2nd, 2025, and December 31st, 2025, for the purpose of constructing the City of Renton water main and improving storm drainage facilities, which support the I-405 Renton Bellevue Widening and Express toll lanes project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move, council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. And we are on to Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mayor Pavone.
All right, thank you. We're on to legislation. We have one resolution for adoption and two ordinances for second and final reading.
The resolution is regarding that street closure. So, resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing temporary full street closure of Hauser Way North between Lake Washington Boulevard North and Lowe's Business Access Road.
Mayor.
Yes.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
All right, next up, we have the first ordinance for second and final reading. This is regarding the, uh, what is it, the second quarter budget amendment and salary update. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2025, 2026 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 6147, and last amended by ordinance number 6158, by increasing the budgeted revenues and expenditures by $6,404,355 and $22,215,881.
and $22,215,881, respectively, eliminating Fund 505, amending the salary table, and adding new approved full-time positions, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is a second and final reading. If there's no discussion, it requires a roll call.
Council President Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion approves.
The final ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the acquisition of the property from the public hearing tonight. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, providing for the acquisition of real property located in Renton, Washington, tax parcel number 1723059026, including through the exercise of eminent domain for public purposes, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final reading. If there's no discussion, it requires roll call.
Hey, Council President Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries. We're on to new business. Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 28th, the committee, the whole meeting is canceled for that, for next week, that day. And then at 7:00 PM, the council meeting will be held here as normal in the council chambers and via video conference, and that is all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no new business.
All right, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 28th, at 5:15, the Finance Committee will be meeting at the council, in the council conference room, as well as via video conference. There are seven items on the agenda. First, agreement with BCR, B-CRA, Incorporation for Architectural Design and Construction Services at the Don Person Senior Activity Center. Second, conservation grant agreement with Puget Sound Energy. Third, inter-local agreement, Seattle Contraband Interdiction and Investigations Task Force, United States Postal Inspection Service. Fourth, agreement with Valley Defenders, B-L-L-C, for indigenous defense services. Fifth, Maplewood Park playground replacement. Six, vouchers. And finally, emerging issues in finance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 28th, at 6:15 PM, the Plan Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and by video conference. We have one item on the agenda, emerging issues in CED, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Contrary to the council committee calendar that was handed out on Monday, July 28th, the Community Services Committee has been canceled. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mayor Pethan.
All right, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Move be adjourned.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? All right, thank you, we're adjourned.